Be careful.
Be careful.
Well, no. We don't see it yet. No, I can't see.
Develop with the first of the lead fire engine. So sometimes we have to launch up that. You've spoken people. Yeah, I talk. Really, I want to move best. And the more you have. So scheduling comes into life. So I think I'll take over seven or more than six or seven. Is the. The goal of. Is. One of the things one. Just. Because I need to talk about timing and purchasing a fire truck availability. So. We will get a bunch. Okay, there we go. Okay. The third is old. Yeah. Is to have. Have relations. Select for or amount and finding peace. What time get that approved and then that way. And that is. Available. We have to do turning issues. So we're. So someone make sure that's what we want. Um. We talk. My four names. Um, I think members of the. Very much. So. Four names is. Okay, um. Sorry to point out that the. It just. Members of these right now. Rightly. Any question? Three or four because they're really me for or. Public members of the. Yes. The. I have maybe. So we want to talk with them or. You spoke. Because if we're going to have to think over here, okay, then so three members of our. There is. I don't. I care another seat for me. They're all. Y'all. Pushed out. I'm angry. You're. Sure. Would be idiot. More. More again, Tim and Daisy. So you. And they're all. Yeah, that's. It's also order increase to the. Here increasing according to the kettle. Have younger members, which means they're really asking to make sure that could stay. Okay. As well. So they all brought up the information to. Control that. Put it in your context. But also. Perhaps. As an alternate, maybe somebody else. All's hours go, you know, but. Do the other thing as an alternate. So that would. Schedule. So. I'm warning. To Lucian and John.
Called it. Fire.
Card. And I'm. About that. Funding vehicle specification. Is. Is. I don't. Day was by. January 14th. Schedule. Was this. Verge. But. This is an alternate. I did three. I thought. Um, you. I think I see. Somebody might as well put. The way information. Alright, so then for the for the. Kerry. Johnny. Someone we're working on right now and it's. See Paul and Manish as alternates. Um, who the. This link of candidates for the. Check out. Committee to operation funding and vehicle specification recommendations, which is of the lead firing. To this word. For town. Consideration is sure committee will be is working. Recommendations. Is like for February 29, 24. Additional discussion. Okay. You tend to use instead of just your front line. Yeah.
Frontline looks like. Yeah, from. If we use. Fire truck. They were saying like for me if I'm sitting and I don't know anything about the five and the people read. See a line five that kind of thing and we crap the truck out there. But if we use. Use. That makes it a little bit that. Do you just. Kind of word it with you. They use need five. People stay to the app frontline like Ryan said, they're gonna think, whoa.
But just as we. Fire engine. Can say. Actually didn't what you. It's just not to limit. But I think full intent here is. Yes. There's what else you know. Maybe there's something else. Comes available that just. I don't. That's my. Alright. Okay, so the next agenda is. Health agreement and policies for non-resident use of the field. So that was. I don't. This.
Question. So where the. Let's say. Right. Kind of. That's like at the bottom.
And the. As well because I. Sloppy when you play this.
They're away to. Marcus.
Yes.
So drag in here. Here I am down there like hopefully if we ever really wet summer. Will have the, you know. But just. You know, about the field is that gonna be.
I mean, I mean, I thought it was solid last year. It turns out pretty well. It's it's where the elite field is right field. It was definitely Quagmire.
I'm just wondering, you know, if if we do, you know, like this last summer. You know. You know, will it still be okay for them to drive down there?
Driving, yeah.
Not the road, but the field.
Because we subject to. We were down here last year playing baseball. Here it's dry. I think it'll be able to drive. And if there is. Rutt damage, it would only be a forcing function to. Level at least right now.
And that's. Yeah, that's.
And I actually drafted that piece. Remember. Clean up and. Make sure that you restore. The ring outwards to rake out ruts. Give it. I used to. Park ground. Of course, I bless all the peoples give it. So, you know, think there'll be good nature. You know, let some loan down there, you know, have a. This one anyways, you know, this is a way to a little bit of income that would come into. Yeah, echo what I think is spirit of this live board was. Get. Fairly true. People who are in four days spending money. You know, camp down there.
The rental fee is that that just be a house for the groupers per person with the. With vision into the group. That's what the gym may use currently. We have a very reasonable facility. For people to use. So I drafted this up to mirror what the. What they use a modest hundred dollars. So is this is this a contract? Try specifically for that this event or the. I think this draft is stand as a document for any. For any resident that want to use. Yeah. So. You don't really need to rent the ball field. Wait. Down there. So. Yeah. Now this is saying. He just is it saying that no one else can use it? So you're you're. No, I'm just saying that. So if rented. Once for that, I can use it. Okay, I just think that this pricing for an event of. I get some money. It is modest, but I don't think it's.
Too much.
Oh, yeah, I mean, considering the the chance of some things, you know, some damage. Saying it would be.
Not very. But that. Very. Yeah, rates I sense is looking at the I think two or seven group is a four. Group with president and CEO.
Yeah.
Obviously, they'll listen to their. Pricing for their members, I think.
And it's per day.
Yeah, so it would be $400 weekend.
So.
Language of.
Yeah.
Any other permits, liquor, liquor. Insurance, general insurance, those provisions are the same to make sure that anybody using. Has a coverage.
So just a mirror off of what JD is mentioning and I was going another way when he said something. So right now residents can go down and use the ball field anytime. Correct? So if we say on here, there's a cost for $50 for residents. Go forward. Do people have to do this and pay in order to use it, residents? Or should we just have this for non-residents?
You can strike that. We're currently at fifty dollar rental for the gym for residents and that gets waived for a number of. Fuel services or other things. Thanks. Local. I would. Stretch the.
About just a little bit of background on this. Renting a ball field was for.
Good. Is it an event proposed to use the ball field in the summer for a weekend?
What is it?
It's a group that does off-roading and day trips, road trips. It's called two oh seven overland.
Yeah.
So they'd like to use it as a hub and then do their, uh, day trip here.
They got a website. So they can come in down there, bring in their motorhomes, pop up trailers, whatever that.
And then, and then they have, um, vehicles they do off-road.
And then they give the use of the facility in the gym at the time for bathrooms.
Yeah.
They name all our water bodies, you know, it's. Way up. This. Water bodies. Cool.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just trying to figure out. It's never been done.
On the box, let's go.
What five hundred?
Joe.
For a day?
Yeah.
Do we know when they go elsewhere? If they're charged?
They weren't charged where. Yeah, there, there wasn't any of this. I'd reached out to Fort Kent to see, you know, what type of agreement they might have had or whatever, and they just let them use it.
Yeah, good. Um. There isn't anything about. How do we incorporate like facilities? You know, forcing them to buy a water body or anything like that, or did they already say they're gonna?
Oh, absolutely they are. And, um, you know, the, the guy.
We're about running one. They don't need running one or two.
Or not. Okay.
Well, they were, they did, they did an event in Shirley. I don't think they had those facilities, so.
You know, and, and as far as, um, them being. Levels, you know. I got a glowing recommendation from Fort Kent. Okay, that they just, there was no sign of them even being there when they were gone.
Good.
As far as the cost, I, you know, it. It's. I don't want. Charge us out of this though, you know.
And that's the one that you do five hundred for.
Excuse me, excuse me, let me finish. If, if you charge too much, you know, and they might say, never mind, and then we lose that potential. Business in town from this group as well, so.
Yeah, see, these, these types of things are not like. I don't, I don't think we should go into this as a muddying venture, but it should cover the risk of, of damage that comes along the way. That kind of in between when you call the insurance company and when you just have to.
And they do carry their own insurance policy too for such things.
Yeah, and, yeah. And for this game, so. So.
Yeah, and I think they, they, they're not planning to have a liquor license. I think they'll go spend their money at the local oil holes.
Yeah.
Which sounds good.
I, I do believe that, um, it's something that he sent me. Um, there's no plan to have any alcohol there. They, that's just not part of their thing.
Okay, well, you have the coverage that they. So aside from the, the costs itself, is there any, any other, uh? Like the cost, I just, uh.
You put the one price for the entire event, though.
That's kind of where I was like, is that just take off that, the rental fee and just. Come up with a cost just to rent the ball field, because it's kind of. Like, it's like you need the assumption that if me and my family just wanted to go get balls down there, we would have to rent it. So I just think, you know. One, just a slight departure from the gym, but, uh. Just a fee to rent the ball field. Residents. I don't, I just think that it just need, it just one or the other.
Yeah.
I would say no fee for residents kind of key.
Or the new. Then.
Well, so the, the, the difference here is, is about whether you want to use it for an exclusive event.
Right.
Or just go use this space, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, but even if we wanted to, if I just wanted to use the monster. Yeah.
That's interesting. Yes, so like, but if you wanna go play ball, you can go do that at any time, but if you wanted to say, hey, my family is reserving.
Reception or something, that's different.
Yeah, okay.
So what, what were you proposing to change in the language here?
Uh. I was just gonna say just a flat fee. It just seems a little.
Her range and. If anybody wants it, just come up with a number for them.
And then. Yeah, but you do wanna advertise that there is a. Risk. I guess, I guess I'd.
Just the first time this has ever even happened, you know, and kind of, you know. Maybe somebody will come down later and want to do it, but I don't expect this to be, you know. Every, every month somebody's wanting the ball field.
Yeah.
Or something.
And kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on the event, the number of people involved, um, the fee.
He's by his basis.
Yeah, I'm case by case basis. Yeah. Cause I don't. I don't change. The.
Do I have to, the, the. Um, one, two, two, three, four. Uh, how's this? To, um, the.
The way, you know, they come back and be sure, um, and give them green light.
Yeah.
If. Is there like a, a, a. A minimum and a maximum that you guys are willing to.
Yeah.
Rather than. I mean, the.
Yeah, I think we could take a. I'm ready for that. That's good. To the.
So to be dead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, I don't. Also they bottle it.
Yeah, we'll let them know. We, we gotta do some road work and.
Yeah.
Some other thing and all the. So it does. I'm getting my for this all. All the work you did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll throw all that in. Do. That already and.
Yeah, David, David Ray crew maintains the ball field. That rules that way, so we'll coordinate. That would. And does the summataries as well. So there's coordination around a band when we need things, when we could or not. So it's good. Alright.
Yeah.
Um. I guess just in the interest of this, and I'll move that we. Of the, the template agreement for the rest of the months involved, a rate of. Two hundred and fifty dollars. Fifty dollars today for residents. Give you second.
Um, so if. If that turns out that that's too much for them, do we have to do?
Yeah, that's what I was like, is there like a minimum that you would go just if, and I won't put that out there at all.
Go back to the. And we have to meet next weekend, so we can.
Alright, on the paper.
Um. Before we. Do have, um, appointments made up for. And to. Money. Am I, can I go do that right now?
So like. Son last night. For. He was sliding down the. Uh, not on a sled. And there wasn't any. He sliced his knee about that. This wasn't the time. Meg could have used a stentor too, if they just butterfied it, but. But it was going through his snow pants, went through his, uh, pants and then. Was it a clean slice?
Is it a rock?
I don't think it was a piece of glass. I was talking with Jeff to kill him. He said it might be a piece of slate, so.
Yeah, that's still. It's still there.
So I just, I don't know what.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, during the summer, it is kind of. It's. I'm not sure if there's something. I think it seems like it's a lot of construction debris that was actually down there.
It may be the first tee for the disc golf. No. For the first. First. Summer fest. It, but it was pretty ratty down through there. Um. These are a number of events. I mean, it's specta, it's a big spectator spot, the fireworks, um.
People replaced our band. The.
Honestly.
Little men, gross.
Gross.
Concert.
That's a good idea.
I mean, long, you know, we go, so take that hill.
Yes.
And just. Turning up there, sort of like that. And that'd be amazing. You could get. That kind of people.
We'll have to update our rental.
There's really discussions with some, some open hours. You do. They. Quite a dream to. Do a show over there.
There's a. In New Sweden, there's a, like an old playhouse, but it's, it's basically a half shell that faces a hill. And then the hill, the hill's actually like a grove, so there's some trees there and they have some benches. You can bring, uh, bring a full up chair or whatever, and they do, uh, concert, uh, festival every summer called the Roost acoustic. It's just a rock concert, rock festival. I went up. We did a day trip for months into, to New Sweden.
A day?
Of best music festival back, um, but it is such a cool. Spot. They have a big field. Everyone parks out in the field and. It's a festival.
It's all that, which is not parking, so. Can they hang right out?
Yeah, that's right.
We'll keep, we'll take account of how. At the gym. Yeah. When the fish come and play. But actually the upgrades to the hill are coming out that is if the fields generate income and I'll let, I'll let the organizer for two.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's something I want. It's just, uh, maybe put it. Uh, yeah, yeah, that mean it would.
But that was something I wanted to talk to David Ray. I'm probably don't do the slow. Um, so. And you really can't without any of you. Legends.
Well, the difference between last year and this year is maybe because it was all grown up last year. Yeah.
Somebody. The fire department, the last two, two years. Going up, going up and done that. But I don't.
Are we?
Yep. So that'll do it.
Second.
All right.